All right, it is six fifty-three, we're entering back into a regular council meeting. We did go in a closed session, as I stated before, to discuss the collective bargaining agreement, the tentative agreement that we had come to with the union, discuss it with council. So with that, I will look for a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of mayor and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Forty-Nine, for the period between August first, 2021, through July thirty-first, 2024, and to direct the mayor and the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city of mayor with one change to twelve point one, to add in the percent increases versus the dollar amounts. To keep that language consistent with further down in the stipend.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second? We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? And again, like we talked about in the closed session, I do want to thank the representatives from the union and the whole collective bargaining agreement, it was a great, we had very productive meetings, I think every, we worked well together and was able to get this resolved within two meetings, so I do thank everyone involved, it was, I think, a great effort from everyone. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries three zero. And with that, then, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Oh, second.
A motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
I didn't want to end it, I guess.
Right. All right, with that, then, Maggie, I think we can jump right into the work session.
All right, so mayor and council, as you know, we've been working on our twenty twenty-one street project, among other projects this year. So with that, we're just receiving an update on the project from the city engineer and with any, if you have any questions or concerns about the project, we're here to answer anything. So I will let Dave provide an update.
Sure, so the project is progressing here, planning on doing paving tomorrow, I will be paving the final lift on the west side of Highway twenty-five, putting the first lift down on Fifth Street on the other side, so I'm certain to see the end in our future here. Still, we'll have some more restoration work and obviously some more paving to do, but hopefully here by the end of August, we'll be looking pretty close to the end. So what I wanted to do is just have, not necessarily go into real detail here with you tonight, but to just start a conversation about when we get the assessment hearing set up here, which will probably be planned probably the beginning of November, wanted to just provide you some information to just get you thinking about how that might proceed. If you recall, when we put the feasibility study together, we had taken a look at the assessments per the city's assessment policy, and there were kind of some concerns raised by some residents and, and I guess kind of city council and staff looking at the amounts of the assessment, just because they end up getting pretty high per the assessment policy. So back before we awarded the project, we had looked at some options that the city might consider as to taking on some additional portion of the cost to reduce the overall assessment on the project. So what I provided you here is just a summary of per the feasibility study, when we had estimated the project before we opened bids, and how those assessments had broken out, or the city costs versus the assessable portion of the project. You can kind of see there, per policy, we, the city portion of the project was nine hundred and thirty thousand versus five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in assessments. Then we had looked at a few of those options that we might consider if we were interested in reducing the assessable amount for the project. So option one was if the city was to pay for the water main improvements of the city's enterprise fund, what that would do to the assessable amount. Option two was paying for the water main and storm sewer costs, and then option three was looking at capping some of the corner lots at a total footage of seventy-five feet. So we just laid these options out here for you, and you can kind of see, just to start with, that we did receive good bids on the project, so, you know, just that alone, when you look at where we started with the feasibility study, the assessment, the assessable amount per policy goes down over a hundred thousand dollars on the project, and then you can kind of see how these different options lay out. The one thing I would just point out is, you know, again, at feasibility study time, when we were looking at the finances for the project, per policy, the city's portion of the project was to be nine hundred and thirty-one thousand. If you look at the ASBID and the various options, if the city was to take on more costs, you can see that it's still in line with those original estimates that the city was given as we were proceeding with the project. So I guess for tonight, I just wanted to be available, wanted to answer questions if you have any about the process, the cost of the project, the progress, those sorts of things, and again, at a minimum, just wanted to give you some information so that as we start looking ahead to that assessment hearing, you have some time to just kind of think about it, and maybe you don't have questions tonight, but you might have some as you kind of absorb the information. I'm not sure what, if anything, you're hearing from residents on the project. If you recall, Mayor Lutheran High on this project has a pretty significant assess, assessable portion of the project, because they basically own the whole north side of Fifth Street, so their, their footage adds up and ends up being a pretty significant assessment for them. I know they've expressed concerns about that amount. So that's, that's what I have tonight, again, more for your information, but if you've got questions, please have me answer.
Just on this second page here, the estimated assessment roll, is that based off the feasibility study or the ASBID?
This is the ASBID.
That's, these are the ASBID numbers, okay.
Yeah, all of the, on the, on the front, that summary I showed you, feasibility study and ASBID, all of the supporting documentation in that packet is ASBID.
Okay. Here is to how much these total assessments might, would have went down from the feasibility.
Right, yeah, and if you look at the feasibility report, I think the highest one on there, excluding Mayor Lutheran, was about thirty thousand, but there were several in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, twenty-two thousand dollars, so just ASBID now, you can kind of see where kind of, a good share of them, just under twenty thousand, a few kind of in that sixteen thousand dollar range, a handful of the eight thousand.
Do you have the other one in front of you? Do you have the original one?
I, I do.
How about, just like property number one, what was that at?
Property number one was at twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Okay, how about property eleven?
Eleven was at twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars.
Okay.
So, you know, five, five, six thousand dollars, depending on the property, that it came down just based on the good bids that we received.
Pretty good.
Perfect.
Oh, there you go, thank you, Maggie.
Thank you. Yeah, because I think for me, I was always, my mindset was, I want to try to stay somewhere similar to the assessments we did on some of the other projects.
Right.
I'd like to see how those kind of compare, and if we can get that, you know, two of them that are kind of similar square footage with, and kind of get a comparison on those.
Yeah, and.
I like where we're going with these.
So here, I have the assessments for the, the east side reconstruction project, so here's a property that was, had a hundred feet of footage, their assessment was eleven thousand dollars.
What was, what was mine?
Six oh one Ridge Road?
Yeah.
Ten thousand, nine hundred.
And how many square footage do I have?
Hundred and fifteen feet of frontage. So, yeah, and, you know, granted, you know, that was two thousand and seven, too, so, you know, time, time has passed here, but.
Thirteen years, I mean, the cost of things.
Have they doubled, you know, I guess, per, per policy, we're, we're about double or a little bit more in some cases, cases than the last project, so now, and again, you know, your financial advisor can give you more information on this, but, you know, we, I believe Maggie had discussed, you know, kind of the various options with them before the project, too, and.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I know when we talked about it, during the time we did the feasibility study, there was the ability to absorb some of those if we wanted to have that discussion. So we did have a, a good, a good dollar amount in those funds to be able to have that discussion to see if that made sense for the city to take on some of those utility assessments.
I mean, they obviously did come down some, and again, it's trying, now trying to compare costs from oh seven to, to now.
Right.
Which is hard, but.
But.
Yeah, we also had more.
Right.
More properties.
I've always kind of wanted to keep that there, you know, because, just because this last road, it didn't need to, we didn't need to repair it back in oh seven, so we left it, and now it's just such a few houses on it compared to the other projects, but.
Yeah, it, I mean, yes and no, you know, so the, you're still assessing both sides of the street, you basically have one property owner on the one side of the street, so, and I guess it's important for everybody to understand, too, the Mayor Lutheran High's assessment is the exact same.
calculation.
calculation as any property owner on the south side of the, the road, so there, there's no, no difference in how those things were, were figured out.
Right. So when I, I'm not sure when we would bring this back, it sounds like we're hoping to hold the hearing in November, but with the next update that we bring to you, what information would you like to be included beyond what we've given you today?
I mean, for sure showing what the original feasibility, making sure that we have those numbers, you can compare where they've come down, because we, we're fortunate enough to get lower bids than we anticipated. You know, I just struggle with changing, just making an exception for this project. We have a assessment policy in place, so it's hard to, you know, how do you, then what about the next project, like, how do you, so do you just change your assessment policy for this going forward, and this going forward, or do you, are we satisfied with that? I mean, I feel like that's, that's the conversation to be had.
Yeah, and I, I think you're right about that, is, you know, you want to be consistent now, the one, the, the most comparable project, obviously, is the one we did in two thousand and seven on the east side.
That was like fourteen years ago, though, so, I mean, that's.
And then going forward, in the foreseeable future, we really don't have another project like this, we will be in our middle and overlay mode for a while, our next reconstructions would be kind of those roads down on, south of Hidden Creek Boulevard, those little stub roads there, I don't believe they have utilities in them, so those will be a little bit different. Yeah, but.
Because I, and I agree with what you're saying, and I'm always concerned with that, what kind of precedence are we setting?
You already have a significant drop from the original.
Mm-hmm, right. Seems more in line, you know, because when you get over that twenty mark, it's.
Right.
And then what's the interest rate if they decide to assess it, is, or is that determined at the time? Okay, no, that's fine, you can just bring.
Yeah, I will, I can.
That's something to bring back is.
And the couple of things you have control over is, one is, so typically a city would, the percentage would be based on what you borrowed, and then you usually put one to two percent on top of, above what you borrowed it at, kind of for your administration cost of, of the money. The other thing that you have the ability to contemplate is how long are you going to stretch these out, you know, so that's the other thing that we could provide you. Well, what does, what does this look like on a yearly basis if you were to stretch this out over ten years versus fifteen years, or somewhere in between?
I recall mine was ten years, and like three percent was something that I recall.
That sounds about right, yep.
Because I ended up, I think I paid, like, twelve hundred a year, just over twelve hundred a year.
Yeah, and, and at that time, too, I believe, if I remember it correctly, we kind of did lay out the different options, ten, twelve, and fifteen years, what that might look at like, and I think ultimately the council decided that we weren't interested in stretching out longer than the ten years, for one reason or another.
Maybe we have to, you know, maybe when we look at that, it does go a little longer.
I'd be willing to look at that part, is that part of our?
I believe, yeah, and I can bring that back, I believe it's, that information should all be in our form, sales document, so we can, I can get that to you.
And I think all this information helps, we have options, it's stuff to consider, and.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to get it to you, is just anticipating you're going to get some feedback that's going to indicate that, you know, some folks are going to believe that this is probably a little high, kind of what this looks like, but you can see, you know, if you, you get down to option two or three, the assessments are dropping down in the ten thousand dollar range. Now, again, going back to the last project, that, that maybe is over, over correcting if, if you're looking to, and correcting isn't probably the correct way to phrase that, but.
It's just making it the same as the last project.
Trying to make them comparable, at least, yeah.
If you were to, if you were to take out inflation and cost of, after fourteen years of the difference just in cost of doing a project. No, this was helpful, and I think, yeah, if we could include, and we have the conversation, what originally it was supposed to be.
Yeah, I think that would be a good visual.
Have any property owners been notified of our newest numbers, or no?
They know the, what the bid came in at, but not the breakdown.
I would make, is that something that we can share before? Because I would like to make sure the residents have conversation, we have conversations. I mean, nobody wants to pay a lot of money, but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, to this point, the only, only numbers you have publicly provided anybody is, is the assessable amount of the project, for somebody to know what their actual assessment is, we pointed them to the feasibility study if they were.
Heavy numbers.
Getting to that detail.
Well, now, I mean, it's.
Going in the right direction.
Yeah.
As part of the assessment hearing, that's when they would be notified what their assessable amount for the project is.
Makes sense to wait till those.
Yep.
Well, right, I mean, so this is ASBID, I mean, we'll, we'll have some pluses and minuses on the project as we've gone along here, so, you know, we'll, we'll want to fine tune these numbers, but again, just to, or to put it in perspective, this is where, where we're at right now.
Yeah, well, it's all good in case any residents get ahold of us and discuss it, see if that helps. Oh, this is good for me for now, this is.
Yeah.
I, I, there was a question at one point, too, about people that have been assessed on previous projects, so if you look at the corner lots on Fifth Street, on the east side of the highway, on the last project, they were assessed forty-six hundred dollars for their share of the side street. On Highway twenty-five, that varies a little bit because the, the front footages are different, but it varies between five and ten thousand dollars for those properties.
Okay.
So, just again, something to keep in mind, they have been, they have, there's a few of them that have participated in the cost of the last projects.
That might be helpful to know, to have those identified.
Sure.
Which ones they were and how much they've paid on the previous project. Good. Anything else on that that anyone wants to share or provide any more guidance? Well, good, I'm glad they're moving along, and going to get the first lift down, that's going to help, obviously for dust, it's going to help. And again, I think I voice this to Maggie and maybe you, Dave, also, I'm a little disappointed how slow the project seems to be moving with, with the nice weather we've been having, but they're still have their timeline they have to complete, and they're still within that, so there's not, I, I mean, there's nothing really we can do, it's just too bad for the residents that it's taking the dust and all that, and with it being so dry, it's been extra dusty, but.
Yeah, and it, you know, it's a hard thing to balance, because on the one hand, we tried to leave it as open-ended as possible because we believe that that gives us the best chance to get good bids, right? And we got good bids, but, yeah, would a different contractor, if we had tightened it up, would we have gotten a different contractor that might have come in with a little bit more horsepower, knock it out faster, but there might have been a cost to doing it that way, too, I, I can't say.
So that's, I mean, that's just more of a comment, and, you know, even over by Snap, maybe that big pile of dirt could have gotten out of there long ago, maybe backfilling where the curb got done and start, you know, some of that restoration stuff versus big piles, but otherwise, I mean, they're still doing what they said they were going to do, so.
I've seen people parking over in that new parking area, so that's awesome.
Perfect, okay, anything else on the street project?
No.
All right, thank you, thanks, Dave. Okay, let's go to number three there, Maggie, the fire station project.
All right, so this is, this relates to the fire station project, but also, well, as you know, the fire station project is, is nearing completion, and with that, I've, there's been some discussion internally with the sheriff's deputy office about relocating to the fire station once it is completed. So as you know, the deputy does have an office location here at City Hall, they share a space with other admin staff, and so just since the new building is going up, we just felt that it would be good to, to bring to council that it's, the idea of, just because I know in the near future, we, we will be kind of shifting buildings and spaces, so just looking at having the sheriff deputy over at the fire station, the reason why, the, the benefits of that is there would be increased security and privacy for some of the sensitive work that they perform. Right now, and I did include a handout from the fire chief, they do have three offices that are planned for, the sheriff's department did say that they would be able to share an office, they would be able to supply security for their computer equipment systems and a secure cabinet for other items that need to be logged, but there would also need to be the ability to lock the doors, and I think we were already planning on having those doors locked, and then also having the sheriff's department able to park their vehicle at the facility as well. So with that, we're just, we wanted to bring that to you for discussion, and we do have Brad Hendricks with the sheriff's department here to answer any questions, and then Andy from the fire department, and then I'm also able to answer questions as well, just trying to get some guidance, have a discussion on how to proceed with, with that.
Thoughts on it?
Guess if it works better for you.
Well, for me personally, like I say, it just, some of the, some of the material that we have, we don't have.
Do you mind coming up to the podium, Brad?
Oh, sure.
So with some of the data that we, that the sheriff's office deals, a lot of it is private, it's sensitive, we don't want it to get it in the hands of everybody, and obviously there's limited amount of people that actually have access over to the office over here, but space is another issue. I just recently received a filing cabinet with a lock on it, so we can put stuff in One of the main, one of the main things we need locked up is if there's any evidence I'm working with, and all of a sudden I get a call while I'm working, if city staff is here, I don't want to leave it on the desk, instead of trapping, you know, packaging it all up and bringing it back out to my squad car, and then bringing it back in to do their work, it's just easier to have a cabinet that's in there. Space-wise, if I'm looking, if I have to interview anybody, kind of in a, a private setting, I don't have any place really to go do that, the community center gets used quite often, now that some restrictions are being lifted, there's more people that come in during the day, so if I, or in the evening hours, so if I have anyone, have anyone during the daytime hours when city staff is working, I really don't have any place to sit down, and not everyone wants, feels comfortable talking inside a squad car, so. So initially, I brought up to Maggie about, you know, just kind of maybe moving my office or my desk space over a little bit, and then it got brought up about the, the new fire hall, and this, I think this was prior to it really being constructed, if I'm not mistaken on it, so. So it's just something we kind of got brought up, and, and we've been just kind of talking around about, and I know our chief deputy is fine with sharing an office, we would just have, obviously, our computer over there, but we'd have a locking cabinet for any other of our extra supplies that we might need, they're not going to be accessible to anybody except for the sheriff's office, so.
Seems to make sense to me, I don't.
Can you support it down there, Andy?
What's that? So I think you've got the. Yep. Layout of the offices and stuff, my thoughts, one of the offices is kind of our chief and assistant chief will be sharing an office, the middle office would be, I guess, the office that I would feel be the best to be able to do it, our training officers will have a desk in there, and then the third office is going to be where our kind of dispatch is, we'll have our mobile, our base radio in there and stuff where we do the paperwork after calls and stuff like that. So that middle office, oh, us as officers talk, we've, we would be able to share that office, we're not in there all the time, so, I mean, the times, you know, they would overlap would be probably very minimal, the only, the other thing that we kind of asked is about, you know, parking the, the car in the station, just that we would be able to have the ability to move it if, in that, we would need to move it for some reason, you know, while it would be parked in there, that, that would be the only kind of concerns that I would have going forward. But, you know, that, that, that middle office, I mean, they are, all the offices do have, they'll have separate keys, locks, and those, it's just going to be that the officers are going to be the ones that kind of have, you know, have access to those, so.
Seems to make sense to me, seems to make sense, and we'll try it out, and if we have issues or bumps down the road, we'll deal with them.
Yeah, if you two can get along, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, if it, you try it out, if it works, great, and then if something's weird, it's not like you don't have, you know, we go back to where we were and make an adjustment there, but I.
We always have the old fire station, too, we could move into also, plenty of parking will be there, and you can have the whole office, I mean, if that's the way, you know, but, yeah, let's see how it goes, and I, I don't have a problem with it.
I guess one suggestion that I would have for the squad parking, it doesn't matter where we go, I'm assuming that all, all your vehicles and equipment will probably be closer to the actual office area.
Yep.
So if we had to get thrown over in the furthest.
Yeah, it would be in the, it would be in the furthest bay to the east side, potential of us having to move it is probably not very often, but just that we would have the ability to, you know.
And I'll, I'll talk to our admin, too, you know, to be able to hand out squad keys.
And, I mean, as far as, if I just, I have one in the chief's office and stuff like that, and that's the only person that has access to it or whatever, you know, we're okay with that, it's just that if, if, you know, for whatever reason, we need to move it out of the way or something like that, we've got the ability to do that.
Yeah, I'll talk to my administration and say, you know, if this is what I like to have, just in case, I don't perceive being a problem, but of course, I don't think it's going to be a decision, so all I can do is bring it up to the chairman, you know, if they're good with it, and what's the move, it's a straight name, and I'll work with you a little bit.
Sure.
And if I have the current car, I'm sure I'll have to get it out parked.
Sure.
All right, perfect.
Yeah.
That's good.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, you know, I think we're kind of in this stage in the next year, so where we will be shifting a lot of spa, or kind of relooking at a lot of our spaces, so I think. spa, or kind of re-looking at a lot of our spaces, so I think it makes sense to try it and, and see if it was a good reassess.
All right. Let's go to number four then, the twenty, twenty-two police contract. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Andy. So mayor and council, as you know, we're en, we're entering budget season, and with that, we do have to start looking at our police contract for twenty-twenty-two. One thing that I've been talking with Deputy Hendricks about is the hours. So, right now, we're currently on a, the summer hours, which is a ten-hour rotating schedule for four days, and so we do Tuesday through Friday, four days a week, and then it rotates to next week, so Wednesday to Saturday. So with that, the normal hours that were approved for the year were five, Monday through Friday, eight-hour shifts from two P.M. to ten P.M. So, um, this was something that we were trying out this year. We have had different shifts throughout the last decade. So we've had the nine to five, we've had the evening shift, and so I think tonight is really talking about how it's going and kind of where do we want to go in the future? What do, what do we want the twenty-twenty-two hours to look at? How do we feel about these hours? But how does the sheriff's department, what are they, they seeing as well? And is it, is it, I guess you would know more than anybody how, you know, is it busy? What are the, what are, what are you seeing out there?
So first, do we know who our deputy is for next year?
No.
That hasn't been determined?
Not yet. We don't, the bid selections and contract, for contract communities doesn't usually start taking place until October, November, somewhere in there, depending on how quickly administration starts working on it and sends everything out. So we don't know.
So remind, remind me, when did you start?
Yes.
For the city of mayor?
So I started February, it was February first when I came back on the road and was assigned here. So I've been here since February first, so I worked.
You've been in both of ours, two to ten, Monday through Friday and.
That's what I initially started out, was the two to ten, and then for the summer hours, now I'm working the four ten-hour shifts of noon to ten.
So, yeah, from your opinion, from being the, the expert, what do you think serves our community best? From, from your perspective?
You know, mayor, mayor to me, I, being a, a longtime resident of mayor, I mean, I lived here for thirteen years. Typically about eight o'clock, I mean, the town starts shutting down. I mean, it, it starts getting really, really quiet. Especially during the winter months, there's not a whole lot of activity. There's not really much going on. People are usually getting home anywhere between, say, five and six-thirty. That's kind of when there's an influx of traffic. After that, there's not really much going on in, in the evening hours, you know, even right now, it's, since it's been kind of an incredibly hot summer, not a whole lot of rain. It's just been dry, it's been humid. There's not a, as much activity as that I would normally see, or think that I would see throughout the city after the evening hours, once everyone gets home and have dinners. It's just, it's just too hot. Nobody really wants to be outside, including myself. But literally after eight o'clock, I mean, if you think about it, you only have one, two, five businesses that are really open. Agave right now, I mean, they, they close down at eight-thirty, Sunday through Thursday, nine o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays. Both the gas stations close down at ten o'clock, which only leaves the bars. And the bars aren't like the, you know, metro bars, you know, where they're going to be jam-packed seven days a week. You have your highlighted hours, you know, between the two bars, Health's and Knuckleheads. Knuckleheads is going to be busier around the dinnertime hour, especially when it's nice out, because they have the patio seating. Soon as dinner is done, I mean, all the cars in the parking lots and parked on the street, I mean, they're pretty much gone by seven, seven-thirty. And there's, you know, maybe just a handful of people in any one of the establishments, you know, after the, you know, at that time. So, um, as a town cop position, I was a town cop for Watertown for three years. Obviously, there, they have a few more deputies than what the city of mayor does. But up there, as, in, in this position, we do have a tendency to get assigned cases. So the question that, that I ask is if we go back to the two to ten schedule, if I get assigned cases and there's people that I need to speak to, I have a very limited amount of time to try and make contact with those people during, you know, probably about two hours, maybe two and a half tops. You know, to try and connect with people unless I adjust my schedule for a day or two to make contact with them. But I don't really want to be adjusting the schedule on a regular basis either for everybody, because I don't want to, you know, let Maggie know it's like, well, I'll be coming in, you know, two hours early, you know, for the next three days, you know, because of this case. I'm also trying to, you know, help Maggie, trying to see, making more of a appealing schedule for people who want to bid and come out here and, and be the, the town liaison for mayor and New Germany, so. I think it's more beneficial personally for a little bit more daytime hours. Just have, having been in this position before gives you a little bit more flexibility, try and get a hold of people, and obviously, work with other agencies or other divisions within the county, like social services, if we have to do follow-up investigations with them, so.
How are the summer hours going? How's that shift now with four tens? Is that?
I think the summer hours, summer hours are going good. You know, I mean, there's, gives more of an opportunity, you know, a little more daytime hours to sit there and patrol the streets, obviously, with all the construction going on. Making sure everyone's, you know, not trying to cut through the barricades and go around them and, and whatnot else. And it gets me out in the neighborhoods a little bit more for the people that are at home or on vacation or staycations. And then obviously, we have the, the ability to do enforcement in the evening hours when traffic starts to pick up a little bit more once people are coming home. Got a lot of positive feedback from people when they, when they come through the neighborhoods on a Saturday. Because as you know, previously on, while on the two to ten schedule, Monday through Friday, you don't have any dedicated coverage on Saturdays. So they, they seem to like that we're around on, on a Saturday, where again, where it's dedicated to the city. So, response times are a little bit faster. Not that we get a whole lot of calls in mayor, which I'm thankful for, because mayor's a great town to live in. But if there is that call that's there, you're, you're going to get a faster response than waiting for a district car to show up.
So would you recommend just doing summer hours year-round?
You know, I think.
Would you switch and do winter hours, Monday through Friday, and do noon to eight or something?
You know, I think the two to ten schedule is a great schedule. It, it gives you more of an opportunity to, in, in one day, in one sitting to go through. To go through all the neighborhoods. I talk with people all day long when I'm not busy. Anyone who knows me in this town, they're going to know I'm a talker, so if I see him outside, I'll talk to ear off. But you find out a lot of good thing, a lot of good information, and it helps build that rapport, and, and that's what we're always looking for in my profession, is build a, build a great rapport with the community, so. I like the two to ten schedule. Like I say, it's, or the, the ten-hour schedule, I should say, I like the, the ten-hour schedule.
The twelve to ten?
Well, twelve to ten, you know, I mean, you know, but like, from eight o'clock on, like I say, it's, there's really not much going on. It's kind of a, you know, spend the last two hours driving through all the neighborhoods and, and seeing everyone locking their stuff up and putting things away, and, and then they're calling it pretty much quits, and then by nine o'clock, there is like hardly any movement around, so. But the ten-hour schedule, I mean, I, I've had a lot of positive feedback on it, you know, like, oh, you're here early today, and it's like, no, we're on trying out, you know, different hours. They seem to like it, so.
So you like the ten-hour days?
I do.
So keep the summer rotating schedule year-round?
I, I, I think, you know, if it's something, this is the first time we've ever, the city mayor's ever had a ten-hour schedule, if I'm not mistaken, since the contracts came over. I haven't heard any complaints. I think, Meg, I've talked with you a few different times. You haven't heard any issues. Mayor, I've chatted with you one day, and, and you haven't heard any complaints or any issues on it. I haven't heard any complaints on it. You know, a three-month period, it's kind of a short period, but, you know, if you want to kind of give it a shot and, and, you know, up through the upcoming contracts with the sheriff's office, if you want to keep that going, just to kind of give a little bit more timeframe, I guess. I, I don't see what the harm in that would be.
I certainly don't mind the four-hour or, or the ten-hour, four tens.
I think it's worked out good and.
And that flexibility that we have with moving them and shifting them and getting a Saturday, I think is beneficial.
Yep, so it'd be literally two Saturdays, two Saturdays a month, or three, I guess, depending on how it plays out, how the, how the month falls.
You can always change it, right, if it's not working out?
Yeah, you know, it, it shouldn't be an issue, you know, and all I have to do is just obviously let Commander Woolley know that you want to continue on with the ten-hour schedule as it is right now. You know, and just kind of give it a little bit more time to see how it plays out. I, I don't foresee him having an issue with it. But if things, you know, if things are working out that you want to go back to the regular schedule, I gotta do, just let me know, and I can get a hold of the commander, and, and then they can kind of work everything out, but.
I think I'd even be comfortable with the winter months of only going until eight P.M. I mean, when it gets dark at four-thirty, five o'clock during the winter, and then maybe ten o'clock in the summer when it's light till, you know, after nine.
I'd say for those, for those that have lived in mayor for a long time, you know, like I said, I moved here in two thousand and five, and literally it's by, during the wintertime, I mean, this, except for just a few of the businesses, I mean, it's, it's pretty quiet.
Like ten to eight in the winter?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, that's, you know, but there's flexibility there that we can talk to if it's you or whoever it may be, but I think for now, I'm fine doing four tens. You know, if we want to initially just say noon till ten.
So are you talking about keeping the, the four?
The summer hours.
The summer hours the rest of this year?
Yes.
And then are we going to change anything for twenty-twenty-two or just keep it?
Seems to be working. I haven't heard any. I think that's, that shifting them a day and getting that Saturday as well outweighs other things.
Yeah, so typically, how my schedule currently works is the first week of our pay periods, it's a Wednesday through Saturday. And obviously, right now, during the summer months, I typically don't see anyone from the city on Fridays, because they're done at eleven, but obviously, once they go back to their normal hours in the fall, I'll see them on Fridays. But I think I, Meg and I, we keep in good communication and contact with each other, even if I'm off on a Monday or Tuesday. Wednesday will come in and I'll, I'll check and see what calls, any big calls that I need her to be concerned about, find out if she's got any issues. You know, if Janelle has any issues, you know, she usually, she's really good about emailing me to check on this and that or whichever else, and so the communication's still there. We're just, you know, short maybe a day or two, depending on the weeks, but again, you guys have the benefit of a Saturday that's in there, in your contract, you know, for your contracted hours, which you guys never had before, so.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yep.
All right, just summarize. Keep it the same for the rest of the year, and then when we do the twenty-twenty-two contract, we will keep it going.
Yes.
Got it. All right, perfect.
All right.
Cool.
Any other questions for me?
Anything else?
No, thank you for.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Well, I will let our administration know that you want to continue on with the, the current hours of noon to ten throughout the, yes, the rest of the year, and when it comes time for the contract negotiations, obviously, just make sure you let the commander know and where the hours that you're looking at, and we'll kind of go from there. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. So you're, you're good with that? You got traction there, Maggie? All right, with that, then we will adjourn.